Good evening and welcome. I'd like to call this regular meeting of January 19, 2021 to order. This is a regular meeting of the San Polipe del Rosc ISD Board of Trustees. This meeting will be conducted by video conference in accordance with the Governor's authorization concerning suspension of certain open mating law requirements for COVID-19 coronavirus disaster. Madam Secretary, would you do us the honor of calling both?
Mr. Contreras? Ms. Wannawhatabet Webb?
President!
Ms. Fens?
Ms. Fens is here.
Mr. Mesa?
Here.
Mr. Overfelt?
Present.
Mr. Smith? And myself. Sir, we have a quorum.
Let the record show that we do have a quorum of board members and that this meeting was due called in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code Chapter 551. We'll have opening ceremonies, first with a moment of silence for personal reflection, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please, ma'am. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. We're gonna follow our agenda again. And the first item that we have is item four, which is going to be recognition. This is, January is usually school board appreciation month. I'll turn it over to Dr. Rios.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mesa, thank you. Every year around this time, we celebrate all the efforts by the school board. Because we're doing it via Zoom, all the schools will not be able to present, but they did select one representative from each one of the grade levels. So there will be one from elementary, one from middle, and one from high school. Before we turn it over to the presenters, I will be reading a proclamation made by the Governor of Texas. So if I may, Mr. Mesa, the State of Texas is the office of the Governor. And it reads, "As we continue to face the unprecedented challenges presented by the novel coronavirus pandemic, the importance of ensuring a better tomorrow by securing our young people's bright and precious features has never been greater. This year has brought the indispensable value of education to sharp focus as school districts across Texas continue to dedicate time and resources to ensure Texas students receive the best education possible regardless of the circumstances. Though we have encountered many new trials, the fact remains that a rigorous and well-rounded education serves as the best foundation upon which young Texans can build successful lives out of their future dreams. School boards play a vital role in our efforts to improve education in the Lone Star State. Across Texas, dedicated school boards work with parents, educators, and community members to create successful learning environments. Our school boards have also been instrumental in our state educational response to COVID nineteen by leading their districts in implementing safety measures, coordinating and facilitating online learning, and providing support to administrative staff, teachers, parents, and students. While school districts will always face new challenges as they serve the needs of students, Texans can count on their school board members, along with other dedicated school officials, to whether these trials create opportunities to discuss important issues, develop innovative solutions, and empower educators while remaining focused on their students' futures. At this time, I encourage all Texans to join in recognition and celebrating the work and success of many school board members across Texas and to remember that the children we nurture today will become the leaders of our state and nation tomorrow. Therefore, I, Greg Abbott, Governor of Texas, do hereby proclaim January twenty twenty-one to be School Board Recognition Month in Texas and urge the appropriate recognition whereof." Signed by the Governor of the State of Texas. If I may, Mr. Mesa, I'd like to just echo what the Governor has stated and express our appreciation from all of the administrative team and the teachers because, over the course of this pandemic, the board has been willing to have numerous meetings to make the best decisions, the more appropriate decisions for the education of our community. Beyond the many, many hours that you've dedicated to the meetings, the board has also just been very willing to spend whatever resources are needed, whether it be to provide staff development for the teachers or purchase all of the laptops that we needed and all the hotspots. Unfortunately, because the demand was worldwide, it took time for those resources to get to our community. But the board decided, well in the summer, to expend whatever resources were necessary. Your contributions were valuable beyond any year. Because of the situation we're in, so on behalf of everyone employed by a school district, I'd like to thank you for all that the school board collectively has done, Mr. Mesa and members of the board. So, thank you so much. If I may, I would like to now ask Mr. Luna or Mr. Jenkins to allow our elementary representatives, Elizabeth Gutierrez, who's a fourth-grade student, and Joshua Gutierrez, a second-grade student at Lamar Elementary. So they're gonna join us and share some words with the board.
Thank you.
You know, I'm sorry, the first one was TSA Representative Vanessa Luna. So I'm sorry, but you're first. So go ahead, ma'am.
Hi, good evening, Dr. Rios and members of the board. I'm Vanessa Luna, the TSA local president. On behalf of our association, we would like to thank each and every one of you for your hard work and dedication to the future. Please accept this small gift of appreciation. Thank you and have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank y'all.
Mr. Luna, will now ask Isabella Gutierrez and Joshua Gutierrez to join us?
Ahoy! President Mesa, respect, a member of the board and Dr. Rios. Hello, I am Isabella Gutierrez, a fourth-grade student.
Hi, I am Isabella Gutierrez, a second-grade student. We are here on the behalf of all elementary school students to express our appreciation for all you do and your continued support to our district. You are the captains that navigate the San Felipe Del Rio C I S D ship. As our captains, you display strong characteristics that empower us to be successful. Thank you for being, thank you for thinking ahead. You ensure that we have the supplies and resources we need to be successful. Thank you for being humble. You navigate the pathway of our education without expecting praise. You simply serve because you care. Thank you for leading with courage. You make day-to-day decisions regarding our education on smooth and right path. Thank you for being compassionate and committed. You have kept our ship sailing through this pandemic by showing compassion to our students, staff, and community. Not only have you been our captains, you have been our steadfast anchors. We leave you with the following quote: Life's roughest stones prove the strength of our anchors. Author unknown. Thank you!
Thank you so much.
Very nice. And next will be a middle school representative, Kendall Carter. Go ahead, Kendall.
Good evening, Dr. Rios, President Mesa, and School Board Trustees. I am Kendall Carter, and it is with the greatest esteem that I am here on behalf of the students and staff from Del Rio Middle School and San Felipe Memorial Middle School. It is on their behalf that I offer my sincerest gratitude for all you do to ensure that we, the students of San Felipe Del Rio Consolidated Independent School District, are receiving the best education possible regardless of the circumstance. You have had to make tough decisions with our safety and continued education at the forefront of everything. That must have not been easy to do, and we appreciate that you always put us first. It was once said that life's toughest storms prove the strength of our anchors. And I am proud that the School Board Trustees of S F D R C I S D are demonstrating your strength in the storm. Thank you for everything that you do on our behalf.
Thank you.
Nice. Now we'll have a representative from our high school students, Alyssa Torres, Student Council President, and parent Claudia Lopez.
Hello.
No, go ahead, Alyssa.
Good evening, members of the, I'm sorry. Good evening, members of the board and Dr. Rios. My name is Alyssa Torres. I am the I am the Student Council President here at Del Rio High School. I am here today representing all the high schools. On the behalf, I would like to thank you for your commitment to helping reach our goals, our aims, and prepare us for our future. The many programs, initiatives, and opportunities our district have provided with your guidance have been invaluable in preparing us for our future. Some of us will be attending college or trade school, joining the armed forces, or beginning our place in the workforce. I am not alone when I say, whatever it might be, we are ready. Even through the difficult times that our city, our state, and our nation are going through, you have been acting in our best interest while trying to maintain a sense of normalcy. We understand the decisions that you make are not easy, but we appreciate everything you do for us and for our families. The vision and goals you have set for our district have been the driving force of our student achievement and success. The national theme for school board appreciation is navigating to success. So I will leave you with this quote, "We can direct the wind, but we can adjust the sail."
Very well said. Thank you so much.
Good evening, members of the board and Dr. Rios. I am Claudia Lopez Cruz, a parent of a Del Rio High School eleventh grader. Tonight, I represent parents of all secondary schools. On their behalf, I would like to thank you for your commitment and dedication to the San Felipe Del Rio C I S D students and families. Our children have been provided with the tools to become critical thinkers, problem solvers, and most important, to build character and gain the skills which will be invaluable as they pursue their goals and aspirations. Needless to say, COVID times have been difficult for all of us. I'm here to say thank you for stepping up and keeping the well-being of children, ultimately our family, front and center in all the decisions you have made. Educating our children while keeping them healthy and safe has been your priority since day one. Thank you for giving us a choice of method of learning that's best to fit our family. Thank you for providing meals for students learning from home. Thank you for facilitating devices or online instruction. Thank you for all of this and more. I will end this with a quote by Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. embodies the work you have done with the San Felipe Del Rio C I S D students and their families. "The ultimate measure of a man is not where he stands in moments of comfort and convenience, but where he stands in times of challenge and controversy." Your dedication to our children does not go unnoticed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, board members, for allowing us to give you a little bit of appreciation. It is a different time, situations are different, and your work has totally been more in demand. But thank you, sir.
Dr. Rios, I just want to allow some time for board members to reflect. Normally, we have a big crowd and, you know, we have some words of wisdom. I just want to say on behalf of myself, I just want to thank every board member for the countless hours they devote for the topic of education, students, parents, and teachers. I think this 2020 year has been a very challenging year. It's taken a lot of meetings, a lot of preparation, and we continue to fight the battle. Even though we just had an election with lots of candidates, we prevailed in keeping the incumbents, which tells me a lot about the character of each and every one of you, that you have done your job. You have gotten the vote of confidence from the voters. And I just appreciate every moment that I spend with each and every one of you and the time that you put forth in addressing the needs of this district. And again, it is just wonderful to see the students, you know, and the great work that they do and the parents as well, to tell us, you know, what kind of job we're doing. But I really just want to say that I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart, that each and every one of you, for the countless hours we spend in our meetings that will disturbing because the students are our future, and they're the ones that will be replacing us sooner or later. Just want to say thank you. So I'll pass it on. We call it popcorn in Tansby. Oh, popcorn, Ms. Web?
I just want to say, thank you, Mr. Mesa. But most of all, thank you, Mrs. Luna, for your comments. Thank you to the Gutierrez students for representing elementary, for Kendra representing middle school, and Analisa High School, and of course, Claudia Lopez. We are here as a board members, and I guess in a way I speak for all of us in a sense because we don't do this for ourselves. We do it for the students, and we do it for the families because education is one of the most important areas in our lives. Without the education, our students don't achieve anything. So they have to have the strongest foundation that our educational system can afford them. And anything that we can do as board members, that's what we're here to do. So I thank each and every one of you that presented to thank us because literally we are here to represent you. So if there's a need or you see something that needs to be addressed, by all means, reach out to us and let us know. And thank you again to each one of you for speaking and appreciating what we do. Thank you, Mr. Mesa.
Want a popcorn to someone else?
Popcorn. Ms. Msonis? I'm next in line, okay. It's an honor and privilege to serve as a board member. I'm proud of all our students, our parents, I mean, and our teachers and our staff. And I'm always ready to listen, as you all know. I love talking and I love listening. Thank you.
Thank you. Amy?
I just want to say thank you as well. Thank you to the representatives that spoke tonight. I am too grateful to be in this disposition to serve, to serve my community. I'm thankful for the opportunity to get to serve with you all as well. I feel it's a blessing, and I'm truly grateful. I'm truly grateful for it. And that's about it, but thank you. Thank you to all the representatives that came out and spoke to us on Zoom tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Mr. Josh?
Yes, sir. Thank you. To wrap it up for the board, everything's pretty much been said there. So yes, thank you to the student representatives, our parent representatives, our teacher organization representatives who were able to come on tonight and say thank you. We appreciate it, and as has been said by many of the members here, we do it for y'all, for the students, teachers, and staff. That's the reason that we're here, is to go in and ensure you're represented and your voices are heard. So thank you for the vote of confidence in the reelection, and thank you for having us as your seven representatives.
Thank you so much. And this theme for this year was navigating the storm. Very appropriately entitled.
Yes, sir.
We continue to navigate the storm. But thank you again for all the kind words to everyone that represented the different campuses and again, TSA and parents as well. Thank you so much. Next item we have is reports. First report is item eight, resilience. First report is item eight, Resilient School Support Program, RSSP, and the National Institute of Excellence in Teaching, NIET partnership. Ida, Ida Gomez, I'm sorry. Ida Gomez.
Good evening, President Mesa, Dr. Rios and members of the board. I too want to thank you for everything that you do and we're going to try to follow up with reports after those wonderful students. And we're going to start tonight with a Resilient School Support Program presentation that's also in collaboration with the National Institute for Excellence in Teaching. In July, the Texas Education Agency opened up this grant. We applied for it and we were awarded. The notification came in in early August. The purpose of this Resilient School Support Program grant is that the awardees would receive a partner, a technical assistance partner for coaching and professional development that would help us to improve remote learning during the 2020-21 school year. That was about the time that we were getting ready to open up the schools. So they did award 40 grants. We started with a remote learning survey. This was used by TA to identify the district's level and areas of need. But that information was then used to partner us up with one of many partners that TA is working with to help districts. Part of that survey showed that our level of support, or I should say lever of support, was to produce effective instruction. All students have rigorous learning experiences because the school ensures objective-driven daily lessons, classroom routines and formative assessments that yield the data necessary for teachers to reflect, adjust and deliver, that meets the need, instruction that meets the needs of each student. The National Institute for Excellence in Teaching is headquartered in Nashville, Tennessee. For the past 20 years, NIET has worked with more than 8,500 schools across the country to support great teaching and improve student achievement. Knowing that teacher quality is the single biggest in-school factor for school success, the National Institute for Excellence in Teaching builds educator excellence to give all students the opportunity for success. Their vision is that every student in America is taught by an excellent teacher and supported by effective leaders every year. And that has been their foundation for the past two decades. Their belief is that intentional sustained and high-quality investments in educators directly result in success for all students and are essential to eliminating the equity gaps. As a result, NIET is committed to raising achievement levels for all students by focusing on the most powerful lever for change, teachers and the leadership that supports them. When TA created the grant, the RSSP grant, they aimed on the following outcomes. Student access to high-quality learning, leading to stronger student outcomes. Parent satisfaction with the learning experience. Building teacher capacity to facilitate a high-quality learning experience. And improving leader capacity to effectively coach the teachers. So that was their goal at TA. They came up with this grant. The partner that we are with, NIET, their goals are to evaluate the effectiveness of our remote and hybrid learning models, to provide us support on improvements, to support the implementation of those improvements and to connect the district to agency and related services to support those improvements. We did have six campuses that were identified for targeted improvement in 2019. Therefore, those six campuses on the screen, Garfield, North Heights and Caladon for elementary, San Felipe Memorial Middle School, Del Rio Middle School 8th and Del Rio High School, are the focused group. However, within two weeks of meeting with this partner, we knew that it was very important to start including all the other campuses. So while we do meet as a focus group every two weeks, we do bring all that same information to all our principals every Friday during the Friday principal meetings. The next slide is going to show you just a timeline of September, October, November, December. It was very quick. In September, they assigned us a monitor at TA. We meet with her monthly. They did have the big launch. They matched us with NIET. The two individuals that we work with on a weekly, bi-weekly basis are Jared Miracle and Amber Simpson. In October, the meetings continued to discuss professional development. Before we could figure out the professional development, the question was, are teachers clear? Have we as leaders and administrators provided clear expectations so that the teacher knows what it is they're expected to do online? So at that point, they helped us create what's called a power move, and I do have a sample for you in just a moment, for both elementary, middle and high schools. These power moves revolve around what the student would be doing and what the teacher would be doing. So if the teacher introduces something, what do we expect the students to be doing? We also began collecting data through our walkthroughs and we started learning walk letters. I will show you some samples in just a moment. In November, we continued with virtual walkthroughs where our principals, along with these partners, went into many classrooms in the district. Our teachers were amazing. Based on that information, we could come back as a team and we could create the next goals. So that all took place in the fall. In December, they assisted us by training our assistant principals and our principals, and then they turned around and provided another training for our principals with our department heads and cluster leaders. There were weekly discussions with that core group and we continued to review the walkthrough data that happened in the fall. So as you can see, a lot of things happened on a weekly, bi-weekly basis. The next slide is an example of an elementary power move spreadsheet. It's broken up into three areas. There is a sample in your packet. The yellow area is the I do, what the teacher would be doing. The blue area is what we would be doing as a group. And the pink area at the bottom is what you would be doing as a student. So you'll see there, for instance, that there are, I believe, nine power moves on this slide. So three of them are at the beginning, three are in the, four in the middle, and the last two are at the end. It'll state what the teacher should be doing. Frequently review of the student expectation to gauge the purpose for learning, in other words, our learning target. And then what should the student be doing? As teachers create their lessons, they're in tune with, if I'm doing this, what am I doing to promote or to engage the student? Then you'll see that all the campuses are listed at the top. You'll see, for instance, there were face-to-face and remote walkthroughs at Barrera Elementary. You'll see there were two walkthroughs and one of them showed that power move. And under the face-to-face, under the remote, there was one walkthrough and that walkthrough did not show that power move. So the principals take all this information, put it on the spreadsheet. It is live. Therefore, at any point in time, board members, we can look at that and kind of gauge, are we getting into classrooms daily? Is there a certain area that perhaps we're going to have to bring professional development? And then we turn around and we meet with Jared and Amber from the NIET group and we kind of say, this is where we're struggling. How can you help? Middle school has their power moves and high school has their power moves. So we do have three grade bands. Now, of course, when we start doing walkthroughs in classrooms, we want to be able to provide teachers that they want to know how they're doing. But what we have to remember is that we're not really looking at what, we're not evaluating teachers at this point. We're evaluating the power moves, the systems, the processes. Do we have them in place? Are we observing them? So when we gather our walkthrough data for this purpose, it's not Ida Gomez or Mr. Mesa. It is just tallies. How many times did we go in and how many times did we see it? In order to provide some feedback, though, to the teachers, the campuses have created learning walk letters. There are two samples in front on your paper. There's an elementary one, Ruben Chavita, and then there's a middle school one for 7th grade. But we do have them weekly for all the campuses. You'll see that it's very interesting because they're every week, and it'll give the week, November 16th through the 20th, for instance. Every learning walk letter is going to include a piece of data. Teachers, we were looking at these power moves. This is how we did as a campus. We went into so many classrooms. This is how we did. This is what we saw. The power, the learning walk letters also have some instructional feedback. Sometimes there's a highlight, this, you know, person was doing a great job using Kami or Paradic, one of the extensions. And if so, the principals will highlight that. They always tell the teachers as a group, what are we going to look for next week? So this is what we looked at this week. And there's always that headway that says, but for next week, we will be focused on this so that the teachers know when we do virtual walkthroughs or face-to-face walkthroughs, what it is we're looking for. And very uniquely, every campus has some kind of challenge at the very end, whether it's a link that they're asking the teachers to look at or whether it's an informational item. It's just some kind of short, two-minute, three-minute activity that continues to build our teacher capacity. As mentioned earlier, the NIET core teams meet with Jared and Amber Simpson every two weeks at a minimum. They make decisions about the progress. So we look at something and then we have to, they ask some tough questions. That team is what is spearheading what the other campuses are doing. Very good conversations. They participate in virtual walkthroughs with those representatives, myself, Dr. Rios, the principals. We review the walkthrough data to ensure that we're all on the same page, you might say, that we're not looking at something through rose-colored glasses that we're actually looking and learning and building. And these conversations and this teamwork that TA has partnered us with, we're just very lucky to have them. They're excellent. They respond to our emails daily, our phone calls. They've been very helpful in ensuring that our principals' questions and just any situation that we're in, they've been very helpful to guide us and to provide anything that's been necessary. I will say that we have just completed cycle one, so we are going into cycle two. We met last Friday and today we met with the principals to get that started. So that in a nutshell of the program. I'm not sure if anybody has any questions.
First of all, I just want to say thank you for applying for the grant. And by all means, any help we can provide teachers with as far as, again, empowering them to do a more effective job, by all means. And of course, the outcome will be that it'll be increased learning from all students involved.
Yes, sir.
Any question from board members? Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
We go on with our agenda, presentation of HB3, EC, Early Childhood and CCMR goals. Ida Gomez.
Thank you, Mr. Mesa, Dr. Rios and members of the board. Board, in December, on December the 14th, we presented the draft for all the goals. We also presented all the progress measures. At that time during the board meeting, we were asked to consider the pre-K for the progress measures, which we have done. For tonight's meeting, the information is the same, except that TA does require that the school board approve the three goals. The progress measures, the calendar, all of that is our activities that we have to do in order to put this together. But for tonight, you will be approving the three goals. So the literacy goal, the percent of third-grade students that score meets grade level or above on star reading will increase from 32% to 62% by June of 2025. You'll see the five-year yearly targets there, along with the closing the gaps. That goal did not change. The next goal that the board will be approving is the Early Childhood Math Board Goal. And you'll see the percent of third-grade students that score meets grade level or above on the star math will increase from 32% to 61% by June of 2025. And again, you'll see the five-year yearly targets and the closing the gap percentages. And the third goal that the board will approve or is required to approve is the CCMR Board Outcome Goal. The percentage of graduates that are college-ready, career-ready or military-ready CCMR will increase from 74% to 92% by August of 2025. Again, the yearly targets are listed there for the five years and closing the gaps targets. Mr. Mesa, later in the presentation, there is an item for approval of the three goals. In your packet last week and then today at your place, we have included the other documents, how we're going to monitor, the progress monitoring, the calendars to present presentations to the board. All of that was discussed during the training that the board had with the region on December the 1st. We've included that for your information. But tonight, we're just presenting the three board goals that will be up for approval, unless anybody has any questions.
Dr. Rios, I do have a question. Military will not be a part of that anymore. So is that going to change from CCMR to something else?
No, sir. They're not going to change the terminology because they are working actively to see how they can verify adequately how many students do enroll in the military. But they're not going to count this year because they don't know that the data they get will be accurate. But my understanding is that moving forward, they are looking for a way to be able to verify that data. So it's still going to stay as a CCMR.
Okay. Anyone else? Questions? I believe not. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item that we have is a report, again, item C, Presentation of Construction Documents for New Elementary Campus, GOERO International LLC. Les Hengue.
Good evening, President Mesa, Dr. Rios, members of the board. For this presentation tonight, we've invited Octavio Cantu from ERO. He'll have a presentation. And he'll be able to answer any questions that you have in regards to the construction documents on the new elementary campus.
Sir Hengue, is, can you double check that Octavio is in the waiting room, waiting to be admitted?
Yes, sir. He was in the waiting room. I'll see if they're having problems letting him in.
Good evening.
There he is.
There we go.
How y'all doing? Happy New Year. Happy New Year. That's still safe, right? We're still January.
Yes.
Hopefully, everybody's been doing well. So good to see everyone again.
Go ahead, Octavio. You ready?
I'm ready. Just say hi to everybody, here to finally present the construction documents for the Del Rio Elementary. It's been a journey. We're here. We were here, we're ready to get uh this thing out in the streets. First thing you see on uh before you on the on the screen here is the site plan. Gives you a general overview of of the layout of the of the property. You can see a pitaya lane there on the left. It runs along the front of the school. We've got some parking in the front of the school with a drop-off drive. Uh to the top of the page, you see another drop-off. That's primarily meant for buses. Uh so we separated the drop-off drives into three individual drives. We have that one on the top, which we kind of see as being buses, but can be used however the school chooses. And it's meant to be kind of one-way. You come in off of pitaya and then you kind of exit back on on the backside down Green Valley. Uh that'll limit some of the traffic going back out on the pitaya, give you an option to kind of redirect traffic in different directions. And then along the bottom, you enter the property right there. We've got another drop-off, which we kind of see more as a parent drop-off or or separated from the visitors uh with some teacher parking and staff parking back there. That little area immediately to the left right there is your service yard. So there's two entrances, so you can come in and out from there to drop off uh what you need at the kitchen. So that's a general overview of the site. The floor plan is um just a further refinement of what we presented the last time. I think the last time we presented, the only modification was made to was to the administration area. It incorporates some of the uh the comments that we received. And um other than that, everything else kind of remained the same. We just kept developing the plan so we can get everybody for for bidding. This is just an overview of kind of what the what's what's in the school. So you can kind of see the number of cla- classrooms that we have for each grade, kinder through fifth grade, uh the number of computer labs, the music lab, the art lab, and the science. Uh one thing that's not on here is the gym. We do have a gym and we do have a cafeteria and the library. And then uh this is a couple of, this rendering, I believe, everyone's seen. We we presented this the last time. Uh that's the front of the school. That's what would be facing pitaya uh that and that one drop-off. Uh to the right is the cafeteria and to the left is the library, the the higher volumes that you see, and the main entrance being right in the center. That's a a rendering or an interpretation of what the library would look like. That that shows you the stacked area. There's a little bit of a raised ceiling area, a lot of natural lighting. So when the kids are in here, they're not um, you know, quite enclosed. And then off here on the left, you'll see the circulation desk with the librarian's office back there. That's the opposite side of the school from the main entry. That's the cafeteria. We're looking at the stage right there. Again, a lot of the same colors, the color scheme, um a lot of natural light and just vibrant colors. That's that's the back wall as you come in the main entry. Um there's a little bit of a wayfinding. And the numbers could change. Right now, this is just suggested, but if you, however the school gets laid out, maybe they don't have numbers. Maybe they have letters or something because the school, the grading may change throughout the years. But the pathways are meant to kind of direct or help show the kids the wayfinding measure. So if you were to follow the five or the blue line, you can kind of get to where the fifth-grade classrooms were. If you follow the red one, you kind of see where the third-grade classrooms are. So it kind of helps that the kids kind of orient themselves and navigate the building, particularly when they first start. They're not necessarily going to know where everything's at. Uh but we can most definitely, instead of numbers, uh put letters uh instead of grades uh because the grades may change depending on how the principal uses this basis. Uh that's just a typical classroom. We we kind of modeled it after Garfield with regards to the number of tack boards and marker boards and and the door and the windows that are shown in the classrooms. And we've got the colors kind of distributed between the different classrooms. They all vary a little bit. Um they'll have different focus walls. That's one of the exterior classrooms, so you can see the windows kind of opening up to the outside. But again, similar and modeled after Garfield. That one actually looks like it's a little bit socially distanced. This is the the restroom cluster off of the main corridor. Uh you kind of see we have a little bit of a half-wall there uh that houses the uh drinking fountains, gives you a little bit of privacy to where the sinks are. But it's open. Uh it it facilitates uh maintaining uh visualization for the for the teachers, the students, when they're using the facilities. Uh the boys would be to one side and the girls to the other. But when they're washing their hands and stuff, you you can kind of watch them and make sure they're not playing with the water or throwing paper towels or anything. And then this is just a little bit, uh in that last image, you'll you'll notice that there's uh some tiles and stuff. This is just some of the palette of some of the purported uh tiles uh to provide some of the color in those areas. So you've got the basic kind of accent wall tiles at the top. And then you've got the uh the quarry tile, which is the grays that would go in the kitchen, and then some of the wall tile, which would be more basic, uh grays and whites. That just kind of shows you what a restroom wall would look like. It has the basic white tile and the exit mend um with those kind of graphic tiles. And then the other one's the drinking fountain wall to create some visual interest. We've done, this is our latest estimate, sixteen point seven nine. Is where we're at right now. And then this is the schedule. On the fifth of January, we went ahead and sent over a set of the documents for review by the district for their approval so we can get uh to this board meeting. And if if approved today, we would have advertisements in the paper on this coming Sunday, on the twenty-fourth. That would allow us to have documents ready for distribution beginning on the twenty-fifth for potential contractors. And then the second advertisement would be on the thirty-first. After that second advertisement, we would then uh wait a couple days and we would have a pre-bid meeting with anyone that's picked up drawings on the tenth of February. And then we would give them up until the nineteenth, ask any potential questions or any clarifications that they may need. And then we would issue an addenda on the twenty-fourth if need be to address any questions or concerns that may have arisen. And then we would um, we're scheduled to open the bids on March the second. Um they've given us some time to uh review them and and rank them and evaluate them and then take it to the board. I don't think the board's showing on here, but I think the intent is to take it on the on the next board meeting the fifteenth for approval and then um notice to proceed would follow after that. So here's some of the some uh summary of those dates. So bidder approval on the fifteenth. If if need be, depending on what pricing comes in, take a look at the at the proposals and see if anything, any cost reductions need to be incorporated on April nineteenth and then notice to proceed on June the first. So there's a little bit of space in there, negotiate with the contractor and uh talk about things if necessary. And then the construction completion or move-in date would be around May thirty-first of twenty twenty-three. And this has been really fun. I really appreciate everybody's input in this process. It's made it uh truly collaborative and allowed us to incorporate kind of what Del Rio wants to see in their in their elementary school. So we're excited.
Thank you very much. Um we received the the drawings. And um I just had a question in regard to the number of teacher restrooms. It was hard to to read. But I again, I thank you for the the many drawings that we received. Um I just wondered if you could tell me the number of teacher restrooms?
Okay, uh let me, let me count real quick. We've got one in the kitchen for the kitchen staff. We've got one in the administration uh for that that the administrate administrative area. We've got one in the nurses clinic, which could be a staff restroom if needed, but it's not really meant for the staff. Uh there's one in the library, on the backside of the library. So that's already one, two, three. We've got one in the library uh for the library staff. And then we've got, uh let's see, there's two more. There's two uh on that on the vertical hallway. There's two right across the cafeteria. So those are outside the kitchen, accessible to staff. So we've got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. I think there's seven, possibly eight. Uh I'm counting seven right now, not including the one in the clinic. Seven individual uh unisex restrooms. They can or or can be designated um however the school desires to use them.
Okay.
So there's two, there's two towards the the back and towards the gym, kind of in the center. There's two along the main corridor across from the cafeteria, one inside the library, one inside the admin, and one inside the uh the planning lounge.
Okay. Yeah, and Les, uh the other question that I had was, uh you know, I know that the you know, the pictures are preliminary right now, but um I I kind of see K first and second, then third, fourth, and fifth as far as, you know, labeling with the color schemes. And I'm sure that's very easy to do, correct?
Yes, sir.
And yeah, I'll turn it over to board members. Mr. Orko.
Thank you, Mr. Mesa. On the the tile, because I, there at the end of your presentation, um talked about, I guess, collaboration as to what Dora wants to see in its next school. Where did the input for the, all the different um tiling come from?
That right there is our first pass. We need to put something in the drawings to establish a cost basis uh so that the contractors can kind of uh provide their pricing. And then what we need to do is take that to to Dr. Rios and his team to make sure that that addresses what what they're wanting to see there. So that's a suggested uh cut uh pattern for those walls. Uh it may be a little bit busy for some. It can be toned down, it can be made more solid. Uh but it establishes kind of a price point, something that the contractor's been incorporating in into the project. And then we can get further clarification from Dr. Rios. Typically, color schemes uh follow a little bit later after we've started the process or after we've released for bids. Uh but we always incorporate something into the documents as a basis because we know we're going to need, you know, certain a certain amount of colors or something like that. So they can't come back and say, well, you only told us we're going to need one color versus twelve. So we try to put some some variety in there to allow for some selections. So we would have to revisit that.
All right. Um and then the, I guess, the last question I have is um in the presentation and in the packet that we have, um it talks about sending the notice to the papers. Of course, we don't have a paper in Del Rio anymore. So for Dr. Rios and 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 Les, uh will you be, for our area, will you be reaching out to like eight three O times and uh those digital um um papers to post locally?
No, sir. Uh we can, it doesn't, it won't cost us anything. But the the way that that we'll advertise, because really in the local area, we know the people that would bid for it. So we're going to do three things. One, we're going to advertise uh in a newspaper like we should. It'll probably be in the Uvalde newspaper. Then we're going to make sure that we send out notice directly to local construction companies that that we've bid, that we've done work in the past. Uh and then uh ERO is going to work with uh Mr. Hengay to make sure that their publishing websites where other construction companies outside of our area will have access and be able to bid. But we had not planned on giving it to any of the local uh newspapers, the digital ones. We had instead planned uh on going directly to the construction company. However, we we can definitely work with them uh to post something on there. Like I said, I don't think it costs anything. Uh but to meet, to meet the letter of the law where we have to post it somewhere, we're going to go with with the Uvalde newspaper. But we can do extra.
Okay. I I said digital because originally like eight three O times was a digital format, but they do have a weekly now um that is is printed and distributed. So in the um interest of transparency, I think it should at least get put into those weeklies that get um printed here. I know our local people are going to know it's coming down the line contractor-wise, like you said, but I still think that we should put it in um those weeklies here.
Sure, we'll uh we'll work with Paul Johnson to see what's available uh and how we can go about at least providing the notice that the the that is out. Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Josh. Anyone else? Ms. Wood?
I just want to make a comment, Mr. Mesa, that I really like the color-coded pathways because it definitely helps with order. I know that uh Lonny Green has blue on their floor tiles and it definitely helps with the coming and going of the students. And with a different color-coded path, I can see each grade level utilizing their own color. So I I really like that idea.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I want to thank you, sir, for being with us tonight. And thank you for your presentation. I appreciate y'all. Thank you so much for the opportunity to work for Del Rio. And we're looking forward to getting this thing constructed and built and getting it out ready for the community. Excited.
Great. Thank you.
Y'all have a great evening.
Nice to see you.
Hi, boys.
Okay, I believe the next item we have is item D, presentation of Texas Teacher Evaluation and Support Systems, TTEST waiver. And we have Ida Garcia.
Yes, good evening, President Mesa, Dr. Rios, member of the board. I also want to take this opportunity to thank you for your service to our district. Um on December tenth, we'll wait for Dr. Rios to bring up the PowerPoint.
So having a hard time cooperating with me, I don't know why, but uh let me uh let me stop sharing and try to open the PowerPoint again to make sure it's well, that's a problem, it's not opening, so let me. Yeah, let me open it again. Give me one second. For there. It's not uh, Mr. Mesa, each of you have a presentation on on your on your desk. Uh so rather than keep fighting uh this uh machine, if if we'll just ask Ms. Garcia to follow her uh hard copy and then the board members can follow their hard copy. And we'll um
Okay.
go on.
Okay, so on December tenth, the DA announced that due to circumstances related to COVID, each district is being provided the opportunity to submit an educator appraisal waiver. The district understands the challenges with the disruption of traditional modes of instruction and the impact of COVID nineteen. Therefore, a committee met to discuss and develop a TTEST waiver. The TTEST waiver was then shared with principals for feedback. The district planning and decision-making committee met to review the waiver and provide feedback as well. It was also presented to Dr. Rios for recommendation. The teacher evaluations will go through the TTEST evaluation cycle to include the pre-conference, observation, post-conference. However, due to the impact of COVID nineteen, teachers will have an opportunity to waive the evaluation during the post-conference. So then the TTEST evaluation will only consist of the summative conference. Uh the the summative conference will only consist of the goal setting and the student learning objective will not be evaluated. So again, if the teacher decides, you know what? At this time, there was a lot of my students that were out due to COVID or the teacher herself was out, then she can have the opportunity to say, I I want to waive this evaluation. And then um only the goal-setting and professional development will be evaluated. Any questions?
Hey there, um would you just take a look at the checklist? Hey there, um, would you just take a look at the checklist? Just so we can understand it.
Sure, uh, the checklist, this is something that uh, when we apply to the waiver, these are some of the questions that are gonna be asked in the waiver. So it want, the process, it wants to know when the, the T-Test was developed. So that was January the 12th. And then document any efforts, because TA wants us to do part of the evaluation process, they don't want us to waive the whole evaluation completely. So what we're saying is that teachers will go through the full T-Test evaluation cycle, however, due to the pink, uh, impact of COVID-19, the teacher will have an opportunity to waive the evaluation during the summative conference. And then the waiver for the educator appraisal requirement due to COVID-19 was presented to the board uh, tonight. We, we need to, but the date, we also need to include the agenda to make sure that it was presented to the board. And then we're also letting them know that the summative conferences or even the pre-conference and post-conference, those can be completed through phone or video conferences, um, as well as feedback can be provided during those times. And then very important that the um, student achievement component will not be evaluated and that's the student uh, learning objective will be waived. And then some of the policies that were reviewed during this process was DNA legal, local, regulation and exhibit, DN B legal, local and regulation, and DN local and regulation.
I think Mr. Orfald had a question.
Yes, sir.
Um, if I may, Mr. Mesa?
Yes.
Um, the, you, Ms. Garcia, you said something there and I, I caught the tail end about um, TA saying that it can uh, oppo, the opportunity to submit a, the waiver. Um, but someone said, we don't want to not do it at all. Uh, like you can opt out at the end, but we don't wanna just completely, like not even do it. I, I missed that part, was that TA saying you still have to do T-Tests? Or the admin within the district is saying, we're gonna do T-Tests, but you can, we're gonna choose to apply for a waiver to opt out. I, I, I got confused, cause I have a question that.
Sure, it's a combination, if, if I may, Mr. Mesa, it's a combination of both. So the first thing that, that uh, TA says is, you have to make an effort to complete the evaluation process. So we can't just outright say, no, we're not gonna do uh, any T-Tests this year. Uh, TA is saying, how much of the evaluation process can you do? Um, so then obviously, we can do all of it. But it's not appropriate to do all of it because we've had kids come and go. So therefore, all of the committees that studied it from, from the T-Test Committee to the side-based, District Side-Based Committee, what they recommended is, let's go through the evaluation process, so where teachers get observed and they get feedback. And then when it comes, uh, but let's not make them do the SLOs at all. But when it comes time to do the summative, the teacher would say, well, you know, my students could have done better, I could have done better if I'd had more time with the students. So I don't want this to count because really, I, I, I would have done a whole lot better uh, had, had, uh, we just had a normal school year. So it's a combination, Mr. Orfald, TA says, do as much of it as you can, but you have the option to waive it, a- and that's why the recommendation came that way through the committees.
Okay, so TA said, um, you, you can, or their recommendation is that you can waive it at the end, but you still have to give at least some portion of it has to be conducted?
Correct, absolutely.
Okay, okay, then that answers, okay, all right, thank you.
And, and Mr. Orfald, that, that's, I'm glad you asked that question. It is a very pertinent question because we do have some individuals who believe that we have the freedom to just waive all of it, and that's just not the case. Uh, TA is telling us, you know, do as much as you can, and then the part that you can't do tells why you can't do it. Well, we can't tell them we can't do observations because everybody has Zoom, e- everybody, you know, has, has one or more ways of being observed. But we can't do the rest of it out of fairness to everybody because we haven't had a lot of transition back and forth because of COVID.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Rios, um, the reason for my question was that, you know, I'm, I'm trying to see how this district sets up staff development and to me, of course, you know, this is a very difficult year, I understand completely. But how do we set up staff development for the following year?
Yeah, Mr. Mesa, I know that, that question's come up before. And uh, so what we've done this year is uh, we took that sheet that uh, Ms. Gomez shared in the previous slide where we observe teachers and, and we give them feedback through the learning walk letters. Well, that whole sheet uh, has a tally of, of what area of as campuses or as a district, we're doing well in, and what areas we need uh, development in it. But the end of the year, we will be able to quantify all the data that was gathered in Cycle One, Cycle Two, Cycle Three, and then really study it and say, uh, what parts as a campus or as a district, we need staff development on. So, so that, that data gathering that the principals are doing uh, is gonna be huge i- in um, in being able to determine what's been observed throughout the year and see what common trends we can find from one campus to the next. Uh, for example, if we were to look at it, um, if we were to look at that, that sheet just during Cycle One for every individual campus, absolutely questioning, uh, when, when we're talking about student engagement, you know, higher questions for, for higher order thinking i- is a big area that, that we need uh, some staff development in. Then, then based on, on the student scores, that's where we come up with what parts of, of, of reading or what kinds of, of math in terms of content we need the development in. But that, that gathering mechanism is gonna be huge in, in trying to, in helping us predict the staff development for next.
And, and that's what I uh, would hope because again, um, most teachers get turned off with staff development not being appropriate for them. Um, one size doesn't fit all, I mean, that did, different campuses have different needs. And I realize this is a very difficult year to be able to, to zoom in on that, but again, to try to make it as most applicable for each of the staff members. Again, and, and you know, there's, there's so many different departments that, you know, I could talk about like physical aid, for example, and, and and of course, we have all the uh, the subjects that, that we do as well, but I just wanna make sure that we tie that into the needs of each particular campus.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Okay. Any other questions? I can't see everyone, so. Do we have any other questions, Dr. Rios?
No, sir, no other questions.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much, Ida. I know that this will come up for approval here later on.
Yes.
Next item that we have is uh, item E, Presentation on Emergency Paid Sick Leave EPSL Resolution, Ida Garcia.
Again, it's gonna take me a while uh, to come, to, to bring up the, the screen, so uh, y'all have the presentation. I'll ask Ms. Garcia to begin as a, and I'll try to figure out um, what's going on right. So go ahead, Ms. Garcia.
Okay, thank you. The provisions of the Federal Families vs. Coronavirus Response Act, uh, FFCRA, which was authorized the additional emergency paid sick leave expired on December 31st. The EPSL paid eligible employees up to two weeks, 80 hours or 10 days of paid sick leave if an employee was not able to work from home. Due to the high COVID cases in the community, it is probable that the district employees may continue to be instructed not to report to work in order to quarantine after exposure to a person infected or the employee being lab confirmed. Administration is recommending to extend the emergency paid sick leave under qualifying events and circumstances previously authorized by the FFCRA. And uh, employees who have eligible exhausted their leave using the FFCRA prior to December 31st, 2020, will not be eligible.
Yeah, I, I, let's take one, one point uh, at a time so we can make sure that we clear. So all this means is that anybody who's already used their 10 days under the previous provision uh, by the FFCRA will not qualify. But if you only use three days, well, then you still have seven days, or if you use five days, you still have five. But anybody who's already used it, you don't get an additional 10 days. Can you go to the second bullet point, Eda?
Can I jump in right there, or do you want me to wait, Mr. Mesa?
Uh, I guess we'll wait.
Okay.
So we're saying that the authority granted by this resolution to provide additional paid or unpaid, we say unpaid because we wanna guarantee a person's um, job if they are not getting paid while at leave. For all employees who may be instructed not to report to work in order to quarantine after exposure or lab confirmed, provides additional leave for a maximum duration of the 80 hours, 10 days, unless the board takes action to authorize leave for a longer duration. Such leave shall be capped at the same rate set forth in the FFCRA.
That was it, pretty simple presentation. Questions, Mr. Mesa?
Josh, yes. Thank you, sir.
Um, okay, so on the part, employees who have already exhausted leave under uh, that act prior to December 31 of 2020 will not be eligible. Two things, one, what would be the largest group that will, would have exhausted it by? Uh, who would have exhausted their stuff by 20, by 12, 31 of, of 2020? Uh, would that, would that be like, would that group be teachers, aides, cafeteria?
More than likely, uh, if anybody would, would have exhausted it, it would probably be uh, individuals who cannot uh, perform the duties from home. Because teachers and instructional aides more often than not can go on an alternate work arrangement and work from home. Uh, unless they're, they're so sick that they can't, can't do that. Unfortunately, uh, custodians and cafeteria workers, um, maybe uh, some maintenance workers, it's hard for them to work from home. Uh, so they, they can't, uh, they, they would have exhausted their days. Uh, those are the only three groups I can, bus drivers, those are the only groups I can think of. There are some individuals who, who uh, who would have exhausted it because they, they, they would not, they would not take the AWA that was offered to them and just stopped to stay home. But by and large, it would be those groups of people.
Okay, um, I, I, I guess I have a a, a moral dilemma, moral problem with, with that um, there because, you know, as we've seen in the last three weeks, the numbers have gotten ridiculous, more and more individuals are having to um, quarantine because um, either the students are bringing it on to campus, the um, teacher, staff, whoever are bringing it on to um, campus because 99% of it's all happening off campus. Um, and, you know, every, every time we have to, um, you know, something happens outside the school and, and a family member, you know, a custodian uh, has a family member or their, their child was exposed at school and they have to quarantine. Uh, now the, the custodian or the bus driver whose child was put into quarantine because a, a classroom was exposed. Um, you know, they, if, if that's happened before, you know, they've burned through that and now we're not gonna be able to um, take care of them, and if they, they've burned all their days, then it becomes a, a, an issue of not, you, you're burning money at that point, uh, there because you're not collecting a um, a, a paycheck, and I worry about some of our teachers who are having repeated um, positive quarantines in their, their classroom if for some reason they're not able to be AWA. Um, that, um, I, I, I just don't see it um, clearing up really anytime soon. Um, so I get, that has me concerned, that's, that's my biggest concern out of, of all this. I'm all for approving and extending the EPSL, um, but I'm just worried about that one line in the whole thing of, if you've already burned your days, sorry.
Yeah, well, if, if I may, um, uh, Mr. Mesa, he, here's, here would be my recommendation. The, the first part is I don't know uh, that, that we have uh, too many individuals that have exhausted their days and, and are now burning personal days, but we can definitely look at that. Absolutely look at that and we can bring back a report back to the board. Uh, a- any teacher or instructional aide, anybody that can be on an AWA, we're gonna work with them as much as possible uh, to make sure that they don't burn any of their days, including the 10 days that, that are provided. Uh, but, but we have also noticed, although not as many, but we also have noticed people that, that perhaps took advantage of, of some of the days that were given, and that hurt us a lot. Uh, my recommendation, Mr. Mesa, is that we approve the resolution as presented uh, today, because there are people that are waiting to, to use these days. And then uh, that we gather some data uh, through human resources to see how many people in the different job categories have exhausted their uh, their, their, their days, and if we need to bring an addendum to it, then we can always bring an addendum and make it retroactive to, to the first of January. Uh, just like you all are proving that today would be retroactive to the first of January. Uh, but we're, we're, we're following the advice of, of, of the, the people that recommended this and the, and the advice of the attorneys. So my recommendation would be that it be approved as, as uh, presented tonight and that we immediately gather data and share with the board to see who's exhausted it. Because at, at, you know, at the end of the day, um, we want to help people and we don't wanna leave anybody um, without days, that's why we're bringing this resolution. But I also wanna make sure that the district's resources are, are protected and that uh, it's not being taken advantage of as well. So that's my recommendation.
Okay, so Dr. Rios, let me see, just a couple of questions here. We know that this 10-day um, leave expired December 31st.
Yes, sir.
So this resolution would extend it to continue past the date? And of course, I know exactly what Ms. Orfald is, is, is talking about, and I agree with that. Um, the only thing is, do we collect the data in regard to who has been quarantined? Do we?
Yes, sir.
Information?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Now, we spend a lot of time uh, collecting that data, both uh, uh, Human Resources does it for the staff side and Ms. Hernandez does it on the student side. And, and they both, uh, and their teams spend a whole lot of time keeping track and they have all that, well documented.
Then I, I, I agree um, with this resolution, the only thing is, would you uh, look into who has, again, utilized those 10 days? And if there's anyone in need to bring an addendum, as you mentioned?
Yes, sir, absolutely, ab- absolutely.
Josh, would that be in agreement?
Absolutely, sir, yes, sir.
Okay, great, because I think we're all looking out and it's, it's not over, you know, when we hear about the different variants of this coronavirus, we don't know when or where it's going to end or whether, again, the vaccine will become ineffective if there's a different strain that um, it doesn't take care of, so if you could do that for us, I think, you know, we'll be in better hands.
Absolutely, sir, we'll, we'll, we'll present it to, today as, as recommended and um, then we'll go and look for data, share that data with the board, and then we have to bring an addendum in either. then we'll go and look for data, share that data with the board, and if we have to bring an addendum in either February or March, we'll gladly do that.
And, uh, I'll ask if any other board member has a question. I can't see everyone, so is, is there anyone with a question? Dr. Rios, do you see anyone?
Uh, no, 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 sir. I, I, I don't see anyone. My screen blanked out for a while, but no, I don't see anyone.
Okay, then we'll leave it at that, just as long as we understand that, uh, you're looking to how many people have exhausted those ten days, and then if we need to bring forward an addendum, we will do that.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll go on to the next item that we have, and it's item F. Nita Lawi twenty, or is it Lowi, Twenty First Century Community Learning Centers Grant. Item on this.
Good evening again, President Mesa, Dr. Rios and members of the board. San Felipe Del Rio CISD is aggressively applying for one of approximately forty Twenty First Century Community Learning Center Grants that TEA has released in an effort to respond to the learning needs of our students, especially after the COVID nineteen pandemic school closures and the remote instructional limitations. At this time, the district is focusing on the eight elementary campuses, I'm sorry, seven elementary campuses from kinder through eighth grade with San Felipe Del Rio Middle School Seventh and Del Rio Middle School Eighth rounding the team to ten campuses. This particular grant was, uh, developed to provide academic support and extracurricular opportunities for students during the school year and in the summer. This would all be done during non-school hours. The district identified three quantifiable needs. In order to meet the math and reading house bill three goals for grades three through eight, our students will require unprecedented improvement in student achievement. As many as seventy percent of our students currently require intensive remediation. Our second need, success in Algebra One is a precursor to many high school STEM courses. However, less than twenty-five percent of our current and less than ten percent of our economically disadvantaged students are prepared for the rigors of advanced math. And finally, our third quantifiable need, we need to increase high school graduation rates, especially amongst economically disadvantaged students. This is dependent on introducing and engaging them and their parents in meaningful activities that lead to committing to the entire house, uh, high school program. As part of the grant, there are some program assurances. Each campus, each one of the ten campuses would be its own site. Operation of services would be a minimum of thirty-four weeks per year. That includes fall, spring and summer. Five days per week for the fall and summer at a minimum of fifteen hours per week. This can include some Saturday morning, Saturday afternoon activities. The summer term is for six weeks, six hours per day, four days a week. Supervision is a ratio of fifteen to one. Services must begin no earlier than July first, two thousand and twenty-one, and no later than September seventh, two thousand and twenty-one. And all services provided are free to students and parents. In a, a, as we worked, uh, through the grant, one of the things that we did as a district is we created an interest survey. This was sent out by the campuses to the parents. In an effort to understand the areas of academic concern for parents, the survey was distributed through the campuses. The following options for assistance were included in the survey. We asked if they were more interested, what they felt the greatest need was. Was it tutorials for reading, for math, homework assistance, or computer program assistance? The preliminary results indicate that tutorials for reading and math is a high need. We also asked parents and students to provide input on the following extracurricular activities that they would be interested in participating in. Those are listed on your screen. The preliminary results indicate interests in athletics, fine arts, and STEM opportunities. If awarded, the district could get up to one point seven million, and we would collaborate with community partners to offer the extracurricular activities such as partnering with Casa Cultura, Valverde County Library, the Council, the Del Rio Council for the Arts, City of Del Rio Parks and Recreation, the Del Rio Boys and Girls Club, and of course, our athletic department within the school district. This grant allows for transportation, for meals, and for all fees. Many times our students can't participate because of the fees, because of transportation. So this would be coordinated throughout the year and especially throughout the summer so that our most at-risk students, about a hundred to a hundred and five per campus at a minimum, would be participating in this, in, in these programs. We are submitting the grant on Thursday, and, um, we, we've worked very hard, Mr. Mesa and, and board, to try and identify the needs of the districts and just write it in a way that shows that we do have a need and it would greatly benefit our students and our community. Are there any questions?
I don't see any hands raised, but I just want to express my sincere appreciation for administration pursuing additional grants, which will ultimately assist our students. This is, again, a very challenging year, and we know that the students will be far behind in reaching their goals. So I, I hope that we are successful in obtaining this grant. And, uh, it would be wonderful to partner with the different, um, organizations that you mentioned here in regard to assistance from them. So again, thank you for sending, you know, that application. I hope we, we become successful in, in receiving those grants. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, thank you very much. We're down to item F, um, I'm sorry, G, COVID nineteen update discussion. Dr. Rios?
Yes, Mr. Mesa. We, um, we put this, uh, item here just to give a brief update and allow, uh, uh, time for discussion. Our situation continues to be the same as when we asked parents to cooperate with us and, and to keep their students at home for at least two weeks. We're very appreciative of, of everybody's efforts. Most of the elementary campuses had, uh, right around one hundred students, um, on campus, which was a significant reduction, uh, from the number of students that were there before. Uh, I think that as a community, we did a lot to, to slow down the spread of, of, of this virus. Couple campuses, probably, uh, One of East and Lonnie Green, uh, had a little bit over two hundred students at the campuses, but even that was a reduction from before. We did put out another news, uh, press release to the parents indicating that, you know, come tomorrow, the schools will be open and, and we're ready to serve them, but that the situation hasn't increased or improved. Uh, if anything, the cases have increased. On top of that, we've suspended all UIL activities and all other extracurricular activities for the, uh, for the first two weeks and now again, uh, until the situation, uh, improves. We, we don't know when we will begin for competition again, but I've, uh, shared with, uh, everyone that we'd like to get back to the numbers that were in November, the positivity rate in November that was somewhere between fifteen and eighteen percent on any given day. That's a threshold that, that, uh, we would like to reach, uh, before we resume those activities. That's, that's where we are, and, uh, if you all have any questions, I'll, I'll do my best to answer them or, or jot them down and get back to you.
Mr. Overfelt?
Thank you, Mr. Mesa. Um, yes, like Dr. Rios said, with the, um, students going in and, uh, our, our, our first plea for parents, if they could, to keep them home, uh, we greatly appreciate that, and I want to, I want to echo that. Um, thank you for being able to, to do that, to lower the numbers on, on campus. And we hope that through the end of January, uh, parents and, and, um, just individuals with custody of children, that you're able to do that for another two weeks. It greatly helped the community and, um, our teachers and staff. One question, Dr. Rios. Um, when, um, I, I know we have COVID protocols in place, um, that we worked on during the summer and then were implemented as we began to bring students back on. And now we're into starting the second semester and, um, I don't want to say not lackadaisical, but, um, that we're, I want to make sure we're not getting too comfortable with procedure on, uh, campus, in especially in the sense of sanitizing, restrooms and, and different things like that. I, I, I believe the protocol sheets for each campus, um, there's a set number of times that the restrooms have to be cleaned every day. And, um, I want to ensure that, that kind of disinfecting is, is still going on like it would have been day one when we were really on, on, on top of it. Because I've just heard, uh, stuff out there and I, I just want to make sure we're, we're keeping on, on top of it for those parents who do have to send their kids to school. So I want to be sure to protect those students, and we want to protect our staff and, and teachers. So I guess that would be just a, um, just a concern is to, to ensure that we are, we're not slacking off, we're not getting, um, too comfortable, uh, because where we are and where we're expecting it to go in, in the next coming months.
Absolutely. Uh, January, February, uh, are, are going to be difficult. And, uh, I'll, uh, I'll work with, uh, David Martinez, our director of, of Soul Services and, uh, Mr. Hanke to, to make sure that we continue to reiterate and work with the campus principals so they can spot check the work that the custodians are doing. But yeah, it's, it's important, uh, that, that we even heighten our, uh, protocols that are already in place just because the situation is worse, especially if more students return to school tomorrow. Because I know that some parents went through a sacrifice to keep them, and they may not be able to do it, uh, starting tomorrow, so absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Overfelt. And I just want to echo, uh, again, Dr. Rios, I know I've mentioned this before, that, you know, our teachers are essential workers and they have to be there with the students and whatever you can do, again, to make sure that, um, we increase the level of vaccinations among our staff and our teachers. Whatever can be done to coordinate and to make sure that they're a priority. The positivity rates continue to increase, um, everywhere, not just Valverde County, but, is going to be crucial in these coming, um, months. So, uh, anything that can be done to, again, ensure our staff to be safe and our students, so. Appreciate that. Anyone else? Ms. Webb?
I just want to echo what Mr. Mesa just said, uh, as far as the vaccines. Because the teachers and the staffs on the campuses are a high priority. Without them, we can't teach. So it is imperative that our staff, uh, gets the vaccines as soon as they become available and that we do not stop or be lax in the use of the masks and the shields and anything else that is already in place. We don't need to go further back. We need to move forward. And the sanitizing that Joshua mentioned, that, that should never be laxed in the first place. So all I'm, um, asking is that we look for the vaccine, make sure that our teachers are at the top of the list as well for vaccines. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rios.
Ms. Mesa?
Yes?
It's me, Amy. Are you can, Amy? I'm sorry about that.
Sorry.
Um, I just have, I just wanted to ask that question, if, if our teachers still had, um, enough sanitizer and the mask and the face shield, whatever they needed to, uh, to keep themselves safe as well and to provide, you know, the sanitizing stuff. Are we still issuing that out? Do you, we still have plenty of that, Dr. Rios, for our teachers? If they need new masks and new face shields and stuff, or we thinking that's available to them?
Yes, yes, ma'am. Uh, we have, uh, enough of, 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 all of the, um, necessary equipment. That's not an issue. And we continue to receive some more.
Good, thank you.
Okay. Dr. Rios?
Yeah, Mr. Mesa, in, um, thinking of what Mr. Overfelt suggested, definitely going to follow up with, with that, uh, absolutely going to follow up with that. The, the only, um, thought I would have, uh, about, I know that there's been a couple of cases at different points, uh, particularly as we were, uh, getting ready to go on, on, on the holiday, uh, where there were some campuses where we didn't have any custodians. And we had to work with, uh, David Martinez, a custodial coordinator, uh, and, and all the team, uh, that reports to Mr. Hanke to make sure that we did something for some campuses. So that is a possibility, but I guarantee you that, that if that's the case, I'll, I'll definitely, approve even overtime work so that the custodians that we do have available to get around to it. That's just a possible explanation. I'm not saying that's, that's what, what happened, uh, in, in the cases that Mr. Overfelt, uh, was, was alluding to, but, uh, we'll, we'll look at that, and, but that is a possibility.
Again, um, whether they're custodians or cafeteria staff, to make sure that those areas are well sanitized.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else? I believe that's it. Okay, thank you very much. Uh, we'll go on to the consent agenda. Again, one actual item will approve all items on the consent agenda. Uh, there are some minutes of, um, public hearing and regular school board meeting and lots of donations. Um, is there any item that would, that any board member would like to pull or have a question on that we can deal with that separately? And I just want to say that we had a tremendous amount of donations from, um, again, people that are so generous to our programs and our, our campuses over the Christmas holidays. Just want to thank everyone for the donations that were made. It means a lot to all the students and all the staff that we have in our district. Uh, again, when we have those donations provided for the needs of either the campuses or the students. Everything from winter coats to certificates or gifts and so on. Now, those donations will be listed in the website. There are two numbers to mention. We are having this virtual meeting, and so for, uh, regard of time, they will be, um, in, on the website, listed on the website. Again, thank you for other people that contributed. My last board members, again, is there an item that needs to be pulled out or if there's a question on any item? I can't see everyone. Dr. Rios, do you see any questions?
No, sir. Everybody's okay.
Okay, then there being no questions, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion made by Mrs. Webb. Is there a second to the motion? Can't see everyone, Dr. Rios.
Mr. Overfelt, second, good, sir.
And Mr. Overfelt? And I'll ask the question. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye, Mrs. Webb?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Mr. Overfelt?
Aye.
And Ms. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Motion passes. Motion passes.
Mr. Mesa, you didn't vote, sir, just by the way.
I'll vote aye, sir. Thank you for pointing that out, sir. I don't, I can't see everyone. That throws me off when I can't see the pictures of. That's, my vote is yes. Anything to move the meeting on, over to the next item?
Mr. Mesa, if, if I may, sir, we have, uh, item thirteen A, and it's somebody from out of town that, that, that we have in, in the waiting room. So, uh, if, if we could bring them on, that way we don't have to worry about going fast or slowing down in any of the other items. So we'd request that you move up thirteen A.
Okay, is there any? Okay. Is there any, um, question from board members? Is, is that okay with your approval? Okay, item thirteen A will be moved up and this is the audit. We do have some information in front of us. So, yes, sir. Consideration to approve comprehensive annual financial report for the 2019, 2020 fiscal year. Amy Childress.
Good evening, President Mesa, Dr. Rios and members of the board. The 2019, 2020 audit has been performed by Belt Harris Pyechek LLP in compliance with components of the Single Audit Act of 1984 and subsequent amendments 1996 and O M B circular A dash one three three, as well as many other guidelines, including but not limited to the American Institute of Certified Public Accountants and Statement on Auditing Standards Number Seventy-four and Sixty-eight and Government Auditing Standards. A, uh, Mr. Mike Brotherton, a partner from Belt Harris Pyechek, will present the audit and answer any questions from the board.
Just, um, wait for them to bring them on.
Yes, he is in the waiting room.
There he is. Go ahead, Mr. Rhodes.
Thank you. Good evening, uh, Mike Brotherton with Belt Harris Pyechek, we're the auditors for the school district. Let me start off by thanking, uh, Ms. Amy Childress for all of her work this year. Stepped into a new position on top of the pandemic. Um, it was a hectic year and, uh, we appreciate all the extra time that was put in. What was very unique about this year from a auditing perspective, um, was our industry almost had to switch over to a virtual audit environment. So that was a change, uh, for a lot of our clients, uh, more time consuming, having to scan and extra documents instead of us being able to come on site to view those. Um, so we appreciate, um, all the staff that, um, assisted with the audit. I'm happy to say that we've issued a clean, unmodified opinion. That's our highest level of assurance, um, that the financial statements are free of any material misstatements and include all the required disclosures. When you flip through the financials this year, you're going to notice that it looks very similar to last year as far as presentation and disclosures. Cause when the pandemic started, the governmental accounting standards board, they decided to delay the implementation of new accounting standards anywhere from a year to a year and a half. Um, so they wanted to provide some relief there. Um, so as far as report presentation, accounting standards are the same as last year. I'll just do the typical, uh, presentation. I'll touch on some, uh, financial highlights and then I'll be happy to answer any questions. So if you have, uh, reports in front of you, we can look on page twenty-three first. What page twenty-three does, it presents the financials, um, on a full accrual basis. Same basis of accounting that for-profit companies would use. So you can, uh, take into account some of the long-term items, your bonds, your capital assets, pension liabilities. You can see there that your total assets at the end of the fiscal year were about a hundred and sixty-three million. Your total liabilities were around a hundred and forty-nine million and that left you with a total net position of five and a half million. I don't think there's anything unique to point out on this page. If we turn to page twenty-five, look at the income statement or the statement of activities. About three rows up from the bottom, you can see the net impact on the full accrual basis. So it was a decrease or use of net position of about six point seven million. You want to turn to page twenty-six and twenty-seven next? We'll look at your governmental funds. Now we're back to the modified accrual basis where you're used to seeing, um, budgets, reports presented on. The only unique thing I want to point out there is, uh, your unassigned fund balance level. To highlight that, uh, currently it's just under twenty-five million. The rule of thumb is that you want to see, uh, twenty-five percent or three months of your annual expenditures and unassigned, unreserved fund balance. Um, currently the district's at twenty-six percent. So you're staying above that threshold. So that's a healthy fund balance. When you factor in the committed amounts also, you're up to about twenty-nine percent. You look over two columns, you'll see, uh, a new fund there, um, ESR, E S S E R. That's one of the new CARES Act grants. Um, so that's new this year. Then why don't we go and flip over to page thirty and thirty-one and we'll just look at the net, uh, operating activity for the year. So the first column on page thirty is for your general fund. You look three rows up from the bottom, that there was a use or decrease in your fund balance of about one point eight million. So the district started the year with thirty-one point one million and ended the year with twenty-nine point three million. We'll just kind of work our way across. Uh, the debt service fund had a decrease in fund balance of nine hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. The ESR fund, the new CARES Act fund, that's a reimbursable grant, um, so revenues will equal expenditures. So it doesn't have a fund balance. You can see on the capital project fund, there was an increase to fund balance of fourteen million. That's from the 2020, um, debt issuance. And then the first column on page thirty-one is going to be the aggregate of all your remaining, um, special revenue funds. You had an increase to your fund balance there of almost six hundred and ten thousand dollars. When we look at the net activity for the year, there was an increase to your fund balance of almost twelve million. And that's due to the, the 2020, um, bond issuance. I don't think there's anything, um, else unique to point out in the report. The rest of the report's been updated with current year information. If there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
I have a question, sir. Um, any recommendations, um, or they listed here somewhere?
We have a management letter. So that, um, there's two letters that we provide with the financials, if you can see that there, there we go. The required auditor disclosure letter and the management letter. Um, so anytime that there's any, uh, findings or recommendation, um, that, um, whether it's compliance related, um, internal control, that requires reporting to the board, this is where it shows up. And the only two that the district had this year were, uh, a budget overage, um, and then, uh, underspending in some of the, um, special allotments. And this is, uh, these are the same two findings that we're seeing from many districts this year. With all the closures, um, those expenditures that you planned on for those special allotments in that last quarter of the year, weren't able to get to those. And then we're seeing budget overages from, uh, um, purchases of supplies, COVID-related type items. So these are two very common, common findings this year.
Okay. Anyone else with a question? Dr. Rios, do you see anyone raising their hand?
No, sir. Uh, everyone's good.
Okay. Don't have any further questions. Thank you.
A- Amy will read the recommendation.
It is the recommendation of the administration that the Board of Trustees approve the audit report for the 2019, 2020 fiscal year as presented.
You've heard the recommendation from the administration. I will entertain motion for approval. Motion made by Diana Gonzalez. Is there a second to the motion?
Ms. Web?
Ms. Webb?
Right.
Second to motion. All those in favor, I'll start with Mrs. Webb. In favor, myself in favor, Diana Gonzalez.
Favor.
Mr. Overfelt?
Aye.
And Amy?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye, in favor.
Okay. Motion is approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now I can see everyone. Okay, we'll go on, um, with the first item that we have under administration, consideration to approve this item eleven A to approve the HB three, early childhood and career in college, uh, military readiness goals for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-five school years as required by the Texas Education Agency documents.
Thank you, President Mesa, Dr. Rios and members of the board. House Bill three goals in early childhood reading and math and C C M R goals for readiness are to be adopted by all public schools. The following criteria is required when developing the goals, the targets and the progress measures. The school board adopts a five-year student goal, outcome goal with annual targets for each applicable group, including the gap domain. Early childhood plan goals must be aligned to the third grade reading and math star and C C M R goals must be aligned to the domain one requirements for C C M R. The districts identify progress measures that can be updated and reported to the board multiple times a year in order to monitor the progression of achieving the goals. The districts create a monitoring calendar for when each progress measure and goal results will be reported to the board. Campuses use the district goals and progress measures to set up their own yearly and student, uh, group targets in order to help the district reach the overall goals and targets. Campuses identify actions and targeted professional development for classroom teachers in kindergarten through third grade that considers the unique needs of students in bilingual education and special language programs. Once approved, the House Bill three goals must be posted on the district website and the campus websites as well. The school board and the superintendent attended the required House Bill three board goals training presented by Region Fifteen on December first of 2020. The draft goals were presented during the December fourteenth, I believe your memo says sixteenth, but that is the fourteenth school board meeting and the recommendation was to include progress measures for pre-kindergarten. Those measures have been included for both math and literacy, um, using the LAP three. If you have any questions, um, I can answer them at this time. Otherwise, it does fall under the same presentation that was made back in December and then today for the goals.
Yes. I believe, I believe we've heard, um, pretty much detail by detail. Any, anyone with a question? No, no burning questions.
Alright.
Recommendation, please.
It is the recommendation of the administration that the Board of Trustees approve the House Bill three, early childhood reading and math and C C M R goals as presented.
Heard the recommendation from the administration. Is there a motion for approval? Motion made by Mrs. Webb, seconded by Ms. Gonzalez. All those in favor, Ms. Webb? In favor, myself in favor, Diana Gonzalez in favor, Josh Overfelt in favor, Amy Haynes in favor. Motion carries on.
Thank you, Mr. Mesa, on board.
Thank you very much. Go on to item twelve, technology and operations. Item twelve A, consideration to approve the construction documents provided by GO ERO International LLC for the design of the new elementary, uh, school campus. Les Henge.
Good evening, once again, President Mesa, Dr. Rios, members of the board. Um, and referring back to the presentation we saw a little while ago, uh, with the new elementary campus. Um, the documents, I believe everyone has received a copy, includes the floor plans, foundation plan, interior and exterior elevations, structural layouts, mechanical and electrical plan layouts, site plans, utility plans and details. In total, I believe it was close to a hundred and thirty pages. Um, so if, if there's any questions on those, um, we are seeking the, uh, board approval tonight to be able to proceed with putting those documents out, receive bids and then we can have further conversations on value engineering and design, colors, different things like that.
Any additional questions for Mr. Henge? Seeing none. Recommendation, please.
Thank you. It is recommendation of the administration that the Board of Trustees approve the construction documents provided by GO ERO International LLC for the design of the new elementary campus.
Heard the recommendation from the administration. Is there a motion for approval? Motion made by Mr. Overfelt, seconded by Amy Haynes. All those in favor, Mrs. Webb? Favor, myself in favor, Diana Gonzalez in favor, Amy Haynes in favor, and Mr. Overfelt. Motion carries on. Thank you, Mr. Henge. Go on to item fourteen A, consideration to approve the submission of the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one educator appraisal waiver to the Texas Education Agency. Ade Garcia.
Good evening again, President Mesa, Dr. Rios, members of the board. It is the recommendation of administration that the Board of Trustees approve the submission of the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one education appraisal waiver to the Texas Education Agency.
Questions from board members? We've heard this before. Okay, no questions. Recommendation has been made. Is there a motion for approval? Motion made by Mrs. Webb, seconded by Diana Gonzalez. All those in favor? A call for Mrs. Webb? In favor, myself in favor, Ms. Gonzalez, Amy Haynes in favor, Mr. Overfelt in favor. Motion carries on. Thank you. We go on to item fourteen B, consideration to approve the middle of application for impact aid. Ade Garcia.
Yes, President Mesa. Every year we seek your, uh, approval to submit the federal impact aid application. The federal aid impact is designed to assist local school districts that have lost property tax revenue due to presence of tax exempt federal properties. And this year, because of COVID, uh, we're able to submit the exact same numbers as we did last year. So tho- those are the numbers that we're going to submit for the application.
Yeah, I was going to ask because normally what we ask is for parents to verify if there's some questionable property for them to come in and bring some documents and so forth. But, um, so we're doing exactly the same number that we entered last year.
Right.
Any questions from board members? Recommendation?
It is the recommendation of administration that the Board of Trustees approve the submittal of the grant application under the Impact Eight Section seven zero zero three and for the superintendent to sign.
Heard the recommendation. Is there a motion for approval? Motion made by Mr. Overfelt, seconded by Mrs. Webb. All those in favor, Mrs. Webb? Favor, myself in favor, Diana Gonzalez in favor, Amy Haynes in favor, and Mr. Overfelt in favor. Motion carries on. Five votes. Thank you. That's item fourteen C, consideration to approve the resolution regarding extension for emergency paid sick leave. Ade Garcia.
And again, this was part of the presentation from earlier and it is a recommendation of administration that the Board of Trustees approve the extension for emergency paid sick leave for employees as presented.
Okay, the only thing is, Dr. Rios, um, you're going to look at, um, data and if there's an addendum to be made, to be brought forward to board members, if we need to make some changes.
Yes, yes, sir. This week is already a little short, uh, but for sure by, uh, next weekend's update, uh, we'll provide some data.
Okay. Okay. Then you've heard the recommendation and, um, from administration that will ask for motion by Ms. Gonzalez. There's a second by Mrs. Webb. All those in favor, Mrs. Webb? In favor, myself in favor, Diana Gonzalez in favor, Amy Haynes in favor, and Mr. Overfelt. Okay, motion carries on. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, the time is eight oh one P M. There are no other items on the agenda. We're going to go into. We're going to go into closed session permitted by Section 551.071. Again, we're going to executive session. If an item needs approval, it will be taken upon reconvening to open session. We're now in executive session.
Okay, the time is 8:42 PM. We're now going to reconvene into open session. No action was taken in executive. We're down to item 18A, discussion and possible action of personnel report. Right there, Garcia.
Yes, good evening, President Mesa, Dr. Rios, members of the board. It is the recommendation of administration that the Board of Trustees approve the following new personnel. Roy Rogelio Dominguez for Del Rio Middle School 8th grade as business technology teacher. Karina Santos, Garfield Elementary, 4th grade teacher, retroactive to December 21st. Crystal Floyd, Early College High School, science teacher, retroactive, December 17th.
You've read the recommendation from administration. Is there a motion for approval? Motion made by Amy Haynes, seconded by Ms. Roverfeldt. All those in favor? Mrs. Webb? In favor, myself in favor, Ms. Roverfeldt? In favor, Diana Gonzalez? In favor, Amy Haynes? In favor, motion passed, it's administered. We'll go on to next item. Consideration to approve the position of registered nurse at North Heights Elementary School. Right there, Garcia.
Yes, sir. It is a recommendation of administration that the Board of Trustees approve Josefa Santiago, registered nurse for North Heights Elementary.
I've read the recommendation. Is there a motion for approval? Motion made by Mr. Webb, seconded by Amy Haynes. All those in favor? Ms. Roverfeldt? In favor, myself in favor, Amy Haynes? In favor, Diana Gonzalez? In favor, and Mr. Webb? In favor, motion passed, it's administered.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next item that we have is item 19, Superintendent's Report. A selection of date for operations workshop. Dr. Rios.
Mr. Mesa, members of the board. The ERO architects completed the design of the high school remodel, the projects that remain. We also have other projects that we've been working on locally that we had hoped to present to the board through a workshop that we had discussed having at Del Rio High School, the cafeteria. Because of the size of the cafeteria, we could spread out and use a new technology. When we last visited with different board members, we had agreed that the 28th of January or the 26th of January would be possible meeting dates. Now, this was before Christmas, this was before the increase in numbers. And I wanted to ask the board just to express their wishes. Do you want me to continue planning the workshop for the 28th, which will be next Thursday? Or do you want me to postpone a couple of weeks until the COVID numbers go a little bit further down? But the idea was to have this phase to phase one so that you could evaluate the work that was already done at the high school and two, see the next proposed phases along with the other projects, Cardwell and all the other ones. So I thought Ms. Roverfeldt has come.
I'll turn it over to Ms. Roverfeldt for a question.
I know when we said this to 28th, I had said, yeah, it probably wasn't a problem. I know I'm going to have to, there's going to be a conflict that evening. I mean, I could be around, but then I have to leave town afterwards. So I wouldn't have a problem with it being moved if other members want it to be moved.
Dr. Rios, could we move it up a couple of weeks?
Sure, sir. We can, can we tentatively shoot for that Thursday, second Thursday in February, February 11th?
That sounds fine to me. I don't have my schedule from Jasmine yet, but that's the only thing that I'm waiting for.
Okay.
Okay, but that sounds fine.
All right, we'll plan for February 11th and we'll check everybody's calendars individually sometime next week to make sure that it works. If not, we'll work on the either 9th or 10th of February, Tuesday, Wednesday or Thursday.
Okay, that sounds fine. If that's okay with the board members, we'll look at it. Okay, there being no other items on the agenda, is there a motion for adjournment? Motion made by Ms. Webb, seconded by Ms. Roverfeldt. All those in favor? Ms. Roverfeldt? In favor, myself in favor, Amy Haynes in favor, Diana Gonzalez in favor, Ms. Webb? Motion carries unanimously, we're adjourned. Thank you very much and have a good night.